Good evening, this is a regular City Council meeting for City of Medical Lake. Our day is March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, let's scan.
... The United States of America, the republic stands one nation that under in the civil, with the liberty to gain justice for
A roll call, Councilmember Precher.
President.
Councilmember Schaefer.
President.
Councilmember Spears.
President.
Councilmember Kennedy.
President.
Councilmember Maxwell.
President.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Fugel.
Here.
Our present, thank you. With your approval of the agenda, I do have one addition to the agenda. I would say promotion to add under workshop six B climate planning grant from the Department of Commerce. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Move to accept the addition to the agenda.
Thank you. No favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the approval of the agenda, we'll consider that approved along with that motion.
Move to accepted and as corrected.
Thank you. Second, no favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda accepted, thank you. Time and place for interested citizen comments. Was there anyone who'd signed in, Miss Weathers? Thank you. I will note on our record that we did have one email citizen comment that has been sent to all the council members, it's in regard to wetlands, and that will be put right into the record. One name, Leo Passanetti, would like to address council. Go ahead and cooperate. There's your name and your address for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Aye. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Leo Passanetti and I reside at fifty-eight fourteen West John Gay Drive. That's in these Windsor Cross and base, old base housing. I'm the executive director for the Spokane Region Long-Term Recovery Group. This group was, it was, it was formed right after the devastation Oregon Rose Fire of Anelka and the grace fire, devastating grace wildfire here in Medical Lake. Okay, what are we and who we are, who are we? We're a community-based long-term disaster response, disaster recovery involving a wide range of human services of service agencies to address the critical unmet needs of people that have been impacted by disasters. We want to engage the community leaders to take ownership and responsibility for the needs that followed the disaster and assume the responsibility for a coordinated effort, and that's where we come in. The LTRG works with the community-based programs characterized by cooperating and programming and coordinating efforts in different agencies such as the Red Cross Salvation Army, all those agencies, we are sort of a clearinghouse that will disperse fundings and will connect the, not victims, but survivors with contractors and vendors to get things done. You have a disaster, you have the responders come after they finish up and roll their hoses up and take their gear away, then go and do their after-action's report. You have the survivor that is out there, he's trying, or they are trying to put their life back together. We are in that middle. We are the conduit that will help direct that with them. With all the programs that are out there, we will find different programs. Because after a while, when everything is all dust settles, resources get scarce and the caregiver and caregiving organizations are, they're pretty well out in the hole. We, we focus on primary, the long-term recovery when a disaster survivor tries to rebuild their lives. Our primary rules, quick on this, is resource development to benefit individuals and communities, case work. And I will stop there at that, but please register with FEMA. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At the end, Leo, you want to add something?
Yeah.
Give you another three minutes.
Last three pages.
It's hard when you put on a spotlight, thank you so much for sharing. We have announcements, proclamations, special presentations, so the American Red Cross Month twenty-four proclamation. I'll go ahead and read that. During American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate Medical Lake Washington's humanitarian spirit reaffirming our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people who sent Black to find us through the Red Cross, provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than one hundred and forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating lifesaving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease, and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now, therefore, I marry Mayor Terry Cooper of Medical Lake Washington to hereby proclaim March twenty-fourth as Red Cross Month, and I encourage all citizens of Medical Lake to reach out and support this humanitarian mission.
Senator Cooper, we have a short video we'd like to show, and then we have some Red Cross volunteers.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think I've always wanted to be handled. Thank you.
We want to maybe.
Red Cross is a great organization, and we have to look out to the mission, the thing to do. In the mission is saving lives. I'd love to, for the people who are in need.
If it were not for the volunteer donors, I wouldn't be here.
And like, I can be there, I'll fly a little way. I'm very important.
We have people that come in all the time, before we start. If you just explain to them the whole process, make them comfortable, things tend to go rather smoothly.
Sometimes they might have anything else on for you. Like that, if I joke a lot with them and make them feel easy, they come back again because of the good test.
There are regular donors who come in and they know your name, they know you, they're the best part.
Remember, one day it was like giving your book, and she always comes, like, and she told me she's got the wrong answer, and I'm like, and I'm like, my dear. I get my happiness, I guess you can say, from the donors that come in every day and want to do their part to help remedy. Everybody is well-trained, they made it a point that we are all playing perfectly and see today, we do the right job. Different challenge every day, what we're doing, we're trying to do for the community, they come to us, and we just gotta be willing to help them.
You have a team here where we all work together to make sure we get the job done.
So you have to work with different people, even if they have goals. My team in particular, I really love, I love the staff, they're professional, they're courteous. Everybody seems to understand what we are trying to do every day, what mission we're working towards, getting it accomplished.
I was going down downhill, S-shaped curve like I have many, many times, and at the bottom of the hill, there's a patch of light on the worst, and there's many coming limbs of concrete tanker, as that road curved, he did, I didn't.
Julia was adopted from Belarus when she was very small, and one day in two thousand and seven, she came downstairs and said, Mommy, I have a pump under my arm. She was five years old at the time, and we found out that it was cancer. Every time she would have treatment, she would just sit on the sofa and really just rock back and forth because she had no energy to be a little kid.
It's been a long road, there's an amount of blood donation, transfusion, et cetera.
Once she got the transfusions, she could run and play and play with her dog and do all the things that little girls enjoy doing.
Through technology, through kindness to other people, I am what I am today.
And although I got there, I mean, I've been nursed, but I still have some parts and how to even fade, potentially fade from life.
You really never know, it could be your neighbor, it could be a loved one that needs it tomorrow.
Thank you for doing what you do because you helped save my life, you helped save my grandson's life, you helped save so many people in the community.
I love this, that's why I'm still here, from the beginning to the end, I love this.
We have a Red Cross spokesperson, if you'd like to come up and address council.
Sure. Thank you. I apologize, that was the wrong video, however, I am a blood recipient and it's my ten-year anniversary, so I kind of feel like that was meant to be. So, we are currently in a blood shortage in the nationwide, and so we're encouraging everyone to go around and donate blood if they can. So that was kind of a good segue for that, so our mission is way more than just blood. And we go through, as Medical Lake has experienced a disaster recently, or disaster response, as well as our training services, our international services, as well as our service to the armed forces. I had the privilege of deploying alongside our military as a Red Cross representative in Kuwait. And our mission is so vast, and so March is the month that we try and spread the word of what we do and let people know that we're always looking for volunteers to help spread our mission as well, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you did for Medical Lake, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then we have another presentation, the SBA Disaster Recovery Presentation, sir.
Thank you very much, and.
I think we have a present here, slideshow two, and.
I just want to say, I am also a Red Cross volunteer and I donated gallons and gallons of blood. I'm A-plus, I'm very popular, and I did not know it was blood shortage, so thank you, when I get back home, I will certainly get back in the queue again. So, anyway, it's really important. All right, so, hello, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is George Costerco. I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery Resilience, and I'm here to provide an overview of the SBA disaster loan resources available to assist people impacted by the August twenty-two wildfire fires. You know, we're here with FEMA, so we go to the next slide. So, the SBA Office of Disaster Recovery Resilience is here following President Biden's major disaster declaration of February twentieth, twenty-four for human loss, physical damage, and economic injury as a result of wildfires that occurred August eighteenth to the twenty-third in Spokane County and outline areas. So, I want to make clear that this presidential declaration covers Spokane County as a primary or designated county. There are a whole suite of benefits that are available to a primary county, just for those that are not initiated, but we do serve your contiguous counties as well, and that's another benefit, it's called Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and I will speak a little bit about that later, but it's funny, so the contiguous counties are listed. I'm gonna really botch the names if I try and pronounce some of them, but at any rate, so not only in Washington State, but also counties in Avery, Idaho. What that means, when I say primary, is that our federal program provides low-interest federal disaster loans to assist businesses and residents that may not be insured or may be underinsured as a result of the wildfires. So we can go to the next slide. So, people don't know this about SBA, because of our name, people think we're just for businesses, but we actually provide opportunities for nonprofits, homeowners, and renters that are not covered by insurance or other recovery funds. Because this is a presidential declaration, we are partners with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which also provides a number of benefits for survivors. And I just want to really emphasize, to be considered for all forms of disaster assistance, we really encourage, even if you're interested in SBA stuff, please first contact, you know, start through process registering with FEMA. And the fastest way really to do that is to either do it online, you can call an eight-hundred number, or we have, and this, you guys have been so wonderful to host this here in the City Hall, we have a disaster recovery center here, as well as we have another one in El Chadoroy. So FEMA representatives and SBA customer service staff are in the community to offer those in-person services and provide grants, and we collaborate with FEMA to ensure survivors have immediate access to grants and loan, being available during disaster declarations, centralized locations. We can go to the next slide. So, that's, these are, this is, let me kind of differentiate, so FEMA offers grants and offers that typically don't have to be repaid. SBA is a loan process, we're kind of like a bank in some ways, so people do have to pay us back, but we do think we've got some pretty good interest rates, and it can really make a difference for someone who may be underinsured, not by any choice or fault of their own, just things change in terms of rebuilding, sometimes costs a little more than maybe your insurance cover. So, homeowners are eligible for up to five hundred thousand to replace or repair their primary residence. Renters and homeowners are eligible for up to a hundred thousand dollars to replace or repair personal property at this loss. And businesses and nonprofits, organizations, up to two million to cover disaster losses not fully covered by insurance. And I mentioned that EIDL benefit, and that is businesses up to two million dollars to help meet financial obligations and operating expenses that could not have, that could have been met had the disaster not occurred. Let me give you a perfect example. We unfortunately had to cancel the salmon season, it affected Washington a little bit, it definitely affected Oregon and California. We did offer that EIDL benefit to the Small Business Administration, we got a lot of interest, and we're talking a whole suite of interests. We're not just the guys that own the boats, right, but people that transport fish, retail establishments that couldn't sell salmon that normally would, those kinds of things. So, there's a number of little pieces that, and that's why I always encourage people to come in and check it out and apply because you might be surprised at what you're eligible for, just like FEMA seems to have a lot of buckets of different opportunities for people to get grants. So we can go to the next slide. So, the interest rates are low, with terms of thirty years of healthy recovery, there's no cost to apply and no obligation except a loan approved. So, once again, it's kind of like being pre-approved for a mortgage. Please come in and find out what you're eligible for, you don't have to take it, but at least you know, you have an idea. So, the interest rates can be as low as two-point-five percent for homeowners, as low as four percent for businesses, and as low as two-point-three, seven-five percent for nonprofit organizations. There's no cost to apply, the loan terms are variable, but obviously, you can go as long as thirty years. This is a critical thing, the deadlines, I cannot emphasize this enough, the deadline is April twentieth. So, when you register with FEMA, you're in, you're okay. If you don't register with FEMA, and you wait one or two days or thirty days afterwards because you're not sure, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more difficult. Yes, we can help, there are late opportunities for people to apply late, typically through a sponsor like at Congressional or Representative Fund Sponsor, but let's just have folks come in and find out and register, and I have some good news, I want to share with you on the registration in a second. So, let's see here, I'm not sure, okay, so basically, we checked earlier today, and we found out that there's been a couple businesses that have come in to this Disaster Resource Center. I don't have the names, unfortunately, it is a confidential process, but if there is interest in EIDL, you guys know how to get ahold of me, please contact me or come in, we can talk to you about that. So, I don't want to go too far into that, but I do want to share the information on the slide. So, as you know, we have two in-person disaster outreach centers that are available for survivors, both El Chadoroy and of course, Medicine Lake, and this is, and the locations and the hours are on the slides there. I want to share with you, as of this morning, we've got three hundred and forty-two FEMA registrations and two hundred and sixty-three of those referred to SBA. The need is still out there, though. I heard your EMS individual, Shandra Fox, speak, she believes the number exceeds eight hundred in terms of people have actually reached out and said it has some kind of impact in this county. So, please tell your neighbors and your friends, we need to get those people in to get registered, to get into the process, it's very important. And as I talked to this young lady here in the audience, it can be a little formidous sometimes, you look at the applications, you think, oh my gosh, should I go through this, we really encourage you to take the time to do it. Once you started the process, you have a lot more time, it's when you wait until after the deadlines, that's when it becomes a little more mission-critical and difficult for folks. And I do want to let folks know that we do, we can go to the next slide here. We do have a business recovery center at the Washington Small Business Development Center at Washington City University, that is in Spokane Valley. Anybody can come there and get help, but we're really focusing that on those contiguous counties and the EIDL benefits because we believe that they're, you know, we have relationships with our neighbors, and sometimes county lines don't really matter, we know people in this region, you know, so at any rate, we just want to make sure that people know that we've got that there. We can go to the next slide, so really relative to SBA, I've given you the FEMA address, but SBA has three ways. One of them is SBA, go right-hand slash disaster, one of them is an email, disaster customer service at SBA, and then we've got an eight-hundred number like FEMA does. You have the next slide. So, SBA low-interest disaster loans are the primary source of federal assistance to help private property owners pay for disaster loans not covered by insurance. So it is an option, you don't have to take it, but it's really important to find out what you're eligible for. And we can go to the last slide. We just encourage people to go ahead and visit us, and I want to say the FEMA address one more time, just to make sure, and that is wwwdisasterassistance.gov, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
That's very, very thorough, and it's very helpful, we're glad that you're here, and you know, I, those are good numbers for as short as you've been here, so congratulations on that, we're really grateful, and I think that probably we've had three hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred and fifty buildings, but you know, in Medical Lake, we had fifty-five homes in the city proper. So there were probably just as many that homes were damaged, you know, so we were really only counting those total losses, so I would agree, the number's a lot higher, but I think we're off to a good start, and we'll help communicate that April twentieth, you know, deadline, and get everybody and to get in on, at the FEMA and get registered, and I'm so glad that you're here, make it convenient, and for people in Elk as well.
I need to let you know, we're standing on the shoulders of giants. The gentleman here, we imagine Medical Lake, those, these, the long-term recovery group, they really got the ball rolling. I'll be honest with you, what I've heard from some of the FEMA folks, is a little, it just shows that a rural community like where I live in Sacramento and the foothills, you know, it's a community of people that are, they go to church together, they meet each other in the store, they're, you know, they're basically self-sufficient, and this is an awkward time where you're asking, not necessarily asking for help, but having people coming in your community to help, so. I know that our intentions are good, and I know FEMA's intentions are good, so to what extent the community can embrace the fact that the federal government has arrived would be awesome, so thank you.
Well, we're appreciative, we really are, any questions or thoughts that you'd like to share, so.
I'm glad you're open, six days a week, that's nice, you have flexible hours, I see, so that's good, that's gonna be good for the community.
And if somebody comes in and the hours end, we say, so let me give you an example, Port Wayne, Amy, about a month ago in Oxnard, we had a Minnesota declaration there. Horrible situation, I'm sure, as you folks that live in the city know, torrential rains, a cell just hung over the port, it wasn't the ocean that came in, it was the fact that the building standards were an hour, an inch an hour to drain out, and they have lagoons, they've got all these conveyances to get water out. They had three inches an hour, four hours. They literally had areas that you have like cinder block fences where water was just basically couldn't get out, and it was rising and writhing, and we had, we had senior homes, senior communities, that literally they had water lines, three and a half feet, and that's the kind of flooding, and then it just as quickly went down once it was able to go. But those kinds of things, we had, we had a disaster recovery thing on, we opened on Saturday at the library, we were supposed to close in due, we were there. We didn't, because we had people waiting, people needed the help, and that first day, we registered a hundred people. So, that, you know, the folks from FEMA, the folks from SBA, the state and local folks that are here, we're here to help.
So I initiated the standing up for the Long-Term Recovery Group, I'm the president, and so it's been six long, but very fruitful months, I'm bringing the community together, I'll say that when FEMA showed up, it brought just the next layer of help, and I, even though it was late and it's unprecedented, unusual, the way we got the award and when it came, and then we're six months in, I think this is a good time, I bring that extra layer of help, and then, you know, the building is gonna take off here quickly in the next few weeks, and and about the time that is really going full board, you'll be done, and, you know, just so the community knows that when everybody else leaves, the Long-Term Recovery Group stays, and it's, it will stay active in perpetuity to finish this disaster, and then also disaster recovery, and then also to be ready for the next one, so that we won't have to put it all together. And so for Spokane County, I think we're in a good place to go forward.
I would agree with you, and you guys have actually set a role model for other committees, what we can do, and as part of the self-sufficiency, I think of this community really speaks volumes about that. And I think other communities, other parts of the western states, I work for one half of the SBA that's west of the Mississippi, so we're all the states, including Guam, and then there's the eastern side, so having been to other states, sometimes you see that community embracements, a lot of times you don't, especially in urban areas, there's not, you don't see the kind of connection that you guys have, which is a phenomenal, you know, gift just apart, that people have that, you know, that connection.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks for coming to talk to us, and we'll get that information from you and be sure to share that out on our our website, through our Long-Term Recovery Group, we're already disseminating that, but.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for, thank you, I appreciate it. Reports, Mr. Precher, any reports for the dinner overnight?
April thirteenth, we'll do our geo walk around the park, hopefully the park's open by then. I think it sounds like it's gonna happen, I will sample the water, and Steve Cooper will be there, Director of Waste for our tree plant, and we'll pick pH and clear trash and all that stuff.
What time does that start?
Gosh.
And it meets waterfront?
Meets at waterfront at one o'clock on Saturday, April thirteenth.
Got it.
And I will email that.
Thank you.
And then May second, we will have the Medical Lake School District Community Seminite. I just saw, yeah, good people, hopefully, hopefully get the helicopters back from Fairchild again, free food, and we'll have the trash can, which I think is cool. Yeah, it's always a good time.
What time is that?
It is at five to seven on May second. Yes, and I apologize, I was out in the field, I was with Noah folks, actually, unfortunately, that was the segue into wildfire season. It's not looking good as far as precipitation, and it should be pretty hot to dry this summer. We've got to see the balloon go off, and they measured the pressure and humidity, all that, so it's kind of interesting. So if you can check it out, they're our neighbors on Rambo Road, and they're really nice people, and they will be at Seminite as well on May second.
Very cool.
And I will stop talking.
Is that at the high school or the middle school?
Middle school, again, yes.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears? Anything for the dinner, Mr. Spears? I bypassed, I said Ms. Kelly Schaefer.
Finance meeting at tonight, we reviewed playing vouchers, we also discussed some couple new oversight that we could do, that's recommended from the audit, so we're looking to start doing that, if you want to add that to our plate as well, but everything looked good on this one.
Thank you so much. Mr. Spears, what would you like to share?
Nothing at this time.
Good, thank you.
No report, your honor.
No report, your honor.
Johnson?
Just want to remind everybody, it's one week, we have to have a balance in for the primaries, that's it.
Glenn gave us a long update of things that are going on, I'll paraphrase them real quick for you. Karate class, session two karate classes are set to start in a few weeks. After-school program, have eleven signed up for the after-school program. And which means they're maxed out due to bus availability. Summer concert series, working on getting a contract signed by Hero Events for support. And then working with KR Creative Strategies with the design of the flyer, they're a local organization. And some promotional materials, kitchen remodel. We're going to talk about that tonight later. Plan should be available soon. Park Advisory Board had its first official meeting on February twentieth. One of the things they discussed were they voted to reduce the cost of recreation date camp programs as an incentive for employees. With restrictions such as employee registration, can't take the spot on a fully paying customer. See. Spokane Parks Foundation Grant, Glenn submitted a grant recently and was advised this last week that he was. The city received that grant, seven thousand dollars. Can use that to reduce the cost for parents for the summer day camp. This year, which will actually reduce the cost of program from two hundred and twenty-five dollars a week to a hundred and sixty-two dollars a week. And if, if they, if they registered their, their kids up for the whole summer, it will save six hundred and thirty dollars. Over the nine to ten weeks, which is pretty significant.
Yeah.
Rent fund kayaks and paddle boards were installed or set up over Coney Island. I went down and took a look at it. It's a pretty cool setup down there. I don't think, I talked about not leaving them there permanently, but that's where they're at for now. Looks, looks good sitting there. Like that's it. And we're going to talk about the pair agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Excellent. So much great work happening. Mr. Weathers.
But the mayor, I have no report.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Council. A couple of things to update you on. The Association of Washington Cities recently released a list of cities, towns and other local governments that have earned. The distinguished well city designation. Medical Lake was among this year's recipients. And what that means is that we met the well city standards and we'll get a two percent discount on our medical premiums for our staff. Which is a great savings to the city. So kudos to Ivana for running our well city program and reducing, when it reduces the risk. It reduces well costs overall and provides that saving. So we've got an even more robust program lined up for this year, greater ideas and. And hope to expand, but this across AWC, they saw, I think it was like a eighteen percent increase of well city designations. So. We're leading the way and others are joining along too. Also wanted to share with you, which you're fully aware of, because Mr. Kostirko gave a brief, a brief on, but. There was a FEMA, the FEMA major disaster declaration was approved by President Biden and what that does is it makes federal funding available to affected individuals in Spokane County. As well as to local, to state and local governments. And so. We're looking forward to learning more as time goes on, but we do have the Disaster Resource Center here. In city council chambers at the times and dates that you have located, had shared, so I won't repeat that. And then I want to share with you as well that waterfront, the Medical Lake Trail is open. We were able to open that with our partners with DSHS and so, but the waterfront park still has some cleanup to do. So we asked that the. Folks stay on the trail through the park until we can get all those things cleaned up and allow for access to the park. But our goal is to have that done around the middle of the month, which would allow us to also have our partners at Kiwanis host the Easter egg hunt at waterfront park. At the end of the month. So that would be great to see that gathering space back open and available. And I think that's all we have for you at this time, unless you have any questions for me.
Thanks for getting the trail open. Everyone's waited a long while.
There's a lot of hands that work, yeah.
No kidding, but thank you so much. I know you did everything you could to make that happen. So thanks. Ms. Wharton, did you want to come up and?
Did you hear up yet on the purchase of the land purchasing or?
The conversation is continuing. Yep. Yep. And it's, it's in a good place, moving in the right direction. So we'll, yeah, we'll continue and to. Get all the details together and we did pursue. Actually, tell you, we did pursue an RCO grant. Glenn was talking with RCO and got some great. Opportunities that really looked like they were going to be dead on arrival because there are stipulations and previous recreational uses to make. Any space ineligible, yet there have been exceptions to that in the past. And the project manager at RCO reached out to inform us of some of those and said that they would love to work with us to pursue a similar exception. So they have that information and we're just kind of. Sitting at the edge of our seats waiting to see how the board responds to that.
And for public information, RCO.
Yes, Recreation and Conservation Office.
Do you mean for the guys on this? I know. Lane of our existence. Okay, thank you. Mr. Wharton.
Well, Mayor, helpful. Make a short and sweet break tonight. Just wanted to bring to council's attention that the Back to Terra agreement that was signed last council meeting. We just had to make divisions through it to make the dates online with what will actually happen because the previous dates were. Set January when we were trying to kind of get the budget rolling to begin with. So. In the new agreement, all the dates are highlighted that are changed. I think those tomorrow, we will take each. Ten. In there. So all those have a date start just up to date, starting September tomorrow. We will pay Back to Terra, their initiation fee, here's all the info and all this.
Well, that, does that count as an amended agreement? Will that have to come back to council for an amendment?
I don't believe so, Mayor. It shouldn't be. This is the first I was made aware of these changes dates, so I can ask Mr. Bowers about anything related to that. But my initial impression is that it does not need any sort of a res resolution.
Okay. All right. It does, just to make sure that we. Approve the dates if that needs to happen. But thanks for letting us know. Anything else that you want to know about?
Oh, I don't.
Any question for, for Mark and Rick Hero here, who's, oh, it's here to happen.
Yes, I've seen the bus over there at the elementary school in the afternoons and making a bus run. So it's nice to see it out and about.
The kids are appreciating not walking through snowstorms right now, so.
I had been gone for a couple of weeks, as you know, and I came back and it's like the bus. It's beautiful. I'm just so excited. So we need to figure out a time that, that something that the council will have to take a tour. So we've been riding the bus and. Experience that. It's, you know, it's, it's a big deal for Medical Lake to have something like that and to promote kids' programs. So. Well done on all your efforts, Sonny and Glenn, for sure. Thank you. The kayaks are awesome. So. Workshop extension, six A, eleven twenty-three, right away from it and use your tire with care. Thank you. Mr. Weathers.
Well, good evening again, Mayor Council. We got a presentation and you should have some draft language in front of you that slides will. Go through. The slides, this workshop discussions on public rights of way permit and use requirements and it will address what a right of way is, the current conditions of. Code language related to right of ways in the city, some management goals and desired expectations and the draft code language for consideration. All right. So the primary purpose of a right of way on the subject of what is a public right of way, the primary purpose of a right of way is public travel. Municipalities have duty to exercise ordinary care in the construction and repair and maintenance of its public streets. For use by motor vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians. Secondary uses of right of ways include utilities such as water mains and gas pipes and telephone lines municipal, you mentioned. Words municipalities have broad authority to manage and regulate the public rights of way. The revised code of Washington provides code cities with broad power in regard to the acquisition, sale, ownership, improvement, maintenance, protection, restoration. Regulation, use, leasing, disposition, vacation, abandonment or beautification of public ways. That's a big umbrella. Some cities have developed a comprehensive right of way use codes. While other cities have code sections that are specific to each type of use. And staff has been working on a title eleven rewrite, which is the streets and sidewalks title for the city of Medical Lake. Or Medical Lake Municipal Code. We've been working on that since our discussion on street vacation that took place early last year. And we have prepared this draft comprehensive code language specific to rights of way. We'll bring back the rest of the title eleven language as we get that sorted as well. But that's the discussion, a topic of discussion for this workshop. Current conditions, the city is assigned onto the inland northwest regional pavement cut policy along with Spokane County and the cities of Spokane. Spokane Valley and Airway Heights and Cheney and Deer Park and Millwood and Liberty Lake and the Washington State Department of Transportation. Which is Wash Dot, another afternoon. And what it does is it establishes a uniform approach to pavement cuts and repair applicable utilities and other contractors working in public rights of way. So it's, it's really a protection to make sure that when work happens and cuts happen in our street, that there's a standard that's shared by all. And so it's not a mystery, contractors don't come into Medical Lake expecting it to be any different than anywhere else. So it's really, that's, that's the strength of our current conditions, but the existing title eleven. Municipal code language includes a street modification permits, chapter eleven point zero eight and excavations, chapter eleven point sixteen. And in two thousand and twenty-two, our insurance pool at Washington City, City's Insurance Association conducted a risk management review of our right of way process. And they noted that our permit application was pretty good while the indemnification clause needed to be updated. But it also noticed that our current code language is quite old. It was established in the nineteen seventies, some dates back to the fifties. And what alarms me specifically is that for whatever work needs to be done in our right of way. Current requirements call for a traffic control plan and a twenty-five dollar fee. And for some of the things that are on the docket for work inside of Medical Lake, that is wholly insufficient for what's to come. So here we are to talk about a new approach. And this approach has management goals to seek to protect the public health and safety and welfare of our community. The coordinate construction with multimodal transportation options and work zones to avoid repetitive street cuts whenever possible. Be nice, we open up a trench so we give everybody who wants to use that opportunity to fill it before we bury it again. So we're not consistently working over the same areas. We want to minimize private business disruption. We want to prevent unnecessary financial burden to the taxpayers. We want to ensure the long-term structural integrity, quality and aesthetic properties of our existing infrastructure. We want to enhance competition among our telecommunication providers because if there's more than one, then everybody gets improved service and. And decrease costs and it's good for everyone. And competition makes us better and we got to beat the other guys. So we work harder to give good services. And we also want to promote partnerships between the city and private utility companies. Our desired outcomes include the following, we want to preserve structural integrity and reliability and performance, safety, ease of maintenance and aesthetic quality of our city's right of way. And we want to discourage visual, visual light and clutter. We want to address the long-term management of the public right of way is if we don't have a big picture plan in mind and everybody comes in to do their little piece in their little place. It becomes quite a mess. So we want to have a long-term management in mind. We want to address concerns about public works contractors or others digging in the right way and encountering. Unknown utilities. We have a history, a variety of developments throughout the past of Medical Lake that makes. Identifying and locating our utilities very difficult because the standard has been inconsistent over time. And we don't know, we, we refer to them as pirate maps, right? Scott, we have a bunch of pirate maps. So we pull out and we look through and we can pull measurements and identify. So we're working to shore a lot of that up with GIS mapping, but. But in, yeah, currently we have really a challenge in that regard. We also want to. Ensure access to the right of way that minimizes disruption to the community, including vehicular traffic and pedestrian flow and public transit and parking and business uses. These are all very important to us. And of course, we want to comply with federal, state and local laws allowing access to the public rights of way. In order to address current shortcomings and effectively approach the management goals and desired outcomes for public rights of way, Medical Lake staff has prepared. Draft language for your review and consideration tonight. Sorry, I know those are really small, but essentially spelling out. The process of getting permit, providing surety, meeting standards and being inspected to ensure that the process is working. So if we could turn to what was provided to you for title eleven point zero eight right of way permit. Something like this. And I'll let you know that, what it includes generally, and we can talk specifically to anything. So it includes a broadly, right out the gate, talking about purpose. It includes a broadly defined purpose that covers construction activities upon, along, over, under or across. The right of way. Current language talks about digging and trenching and underground only. So this is an opportunity for us to broaden that purpose to not just what's underground, but what's above ground as well. Any, any questions or thoughts on the purpose? So it also defines when a permit is required, which is important. So there's language in there to explain whatever that activity is. And what's required for that work. And, and this can, there's quite a range here, right? It could be something that somebody's going to do in some obscure alley in one corner of an area. And so that's that project, but it also could include hypothetically. Internet provider who wants to put fiber. All through every right of way in the city. And so that's a much different perspective. So being able to define what it is that we need. Is important and also articulating the minimum contents of that application, which is the permit application spelling out all those pieces. And includes description of the work to be covered by the permit, the location where the work is to be done, scale drawing. Period of time, which that right of way will be obstructed, that an estimated value of that proposed work and just traffic control plan if it impacts to. Traveling public in any way, the proof that there are adequate licenses and insurance requirements and bonding and a bond to cover that work. It also articulate, it defines proof of insurance and performance bond requirements. So there's some language in there spelling out what that is. And those bond requirements are really going to be determined based on the amount of work. Our current code language for your reference. Says that you have a, it spells it out specifically that a thousand dollar bond is required. And really today's minimum standard is ten thousand dollars is the smallest that you would expect for a bond, but our code spells out. That. And so the new code doesn't spell out the specific amount. It says that it would have to be essentially that that bond. Value would have to be sufficient to the work that's being done. And that would be concluded or decided through engineering review in the application review process.
Is that a percentage usually?
Is that a percentage usually?
Uh so it usually is, uh it's um the way that the engineer or engineer, I talked with him about this. The way that he looks at it is it would be a hundred percent of the potential damage, the cost of restoring the potential damage that could take place. So any street cut, it's gonna cover all the cost of restoring that street cut. Uh or if it intersects any other infrastructure, whatever infrastructure it intersects. If all of that was to be damaged, you would want that bond to cover a hundred percent of the work, the cost of the work required to restore it. So um it in in a larger project, it could be a very complicated, really require that engineers review to look at all the pieces of the puzzle. It could be impacted. And the reason that we want that is because um sometimes things don't always work out according to plan. And contractors can leave before finishing their work or disappear or go bankrupt before the job is done. And uh with the bond that was required and and provided in advance, we could complete the work and restore. Uh recover our costs through that bond. So it's a very safe mechanism that gives us recourse uh in the worst case scenario. Uh so in addition to the insurance and performance bond requirements, it states construction standards and traffic control expectations. Which I think are very important as well when we are disrupting or creating obstructions or doing work that can slow things down and have an impact. So being able to clearly spell out the standards that exist, which um again, it's not, it's not an exhaustive list. But it does define that there are standards and it gives us room as well towards then and talks about rules and policy. Um eleven point zero eight point one seventy, that we can further define standards and policies and rules. Uh that are commensurate with the code language. So um eventually we could even go so far as to do a section cut and say this is above ground. A ideal scenario of how we want utilities to look when they're above ground. And when they're below grounds, we could define those standards so that any work that takes place from now forward, we know exactly what it looks like. Because those standards have been defined. And it also articulates uh inspection requirements and expectations, which put a little bit more burden on uh. Our public works director, uh but he is a very conscientious and and good steward of our space as well. So it it really gives me great comfort to know that no completion will be signed off until he's satisfied. That it's been restored in proper order, um which is important.
I have one question under one seventy with the adoption of rule of policy. Um I'm okay with procedures and forms that don't follow policy, you can say you have to come to council or is that is assumed or?
Um we can add the language in there to ensure that that's yeah.
Out of curiosity, um would be the update for this model up or something in the RCW or the WAX?
Uh so it does reflect requirements in RCWs and it and it's really from, there's quite a few. Um examples, we didn't follow any singular example, but we looked at what fits best for where we're at. And we've had a history of a lack of interest of of some of this work because of our circumstances. Or we're far removed from uh networks for fiber, for instance, broadband internet or cable. And we have this very dense rock face that makes it complicated to bury. And um and we have only so much overhead space. And so the cost of entry was really great and there wasn't a lot of interest. Now but now there's a lot of 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 resources and and money available federally for both um. Internet service providers and for government agencies to help fill in that gap and make that cost of entry less. Uh so looking at where we're at and how we operate too, it's uh we didn't want to be too robotic. Or or overly thorough, but at the same time recognizing that there is a better, more ideal outcome for for Medical Lake. We wanted to make sure that we included all the right steps and language, something we could manage.
So I'm also assuming that the rules apply strictly within city limits. And they would not apply towards the road towards Silver Lake or outside the city.
That's correct.
They'd be under county rules?
Yes, and we did want to make sure that that we had alignment um to some degree with the county as well. So that's not, yeah.
What I like about this too, under zero two zero talks that establishes the. Utility and franchise agreements, which we didn't have before, and then a new permit fee. Where it's saying about uh those are set by a resolution and I like that ultimately it doesn't put the fee in the. The law, but it, we would add that to our schedule and that would be updated on a regular basis, agreed by council. Um and so I. And then that recommendation for the that be are gonna come from staff and they just be adopted as we go along. So I like the way that it's general, um but it covers all the important things. It's really well done. Thank you.
Richard and Mr. Spears.
Oh, you, I I've got some more esoteric questions, so I should do.
You're assuming I don't?
I guess that all you shouldn't assume.
So um I'm just looking at this, so as a contractor myself, the definition for con- construction activities and stuff like that. So. In all city right of ways, so like in C, installing or replacing cables or wires conduit. Long, over, under, or across any city, street, alley, or any infrastructure or city-owned easement. So like if a private citizen called for service drop for an overhead service for electrical service. And they had to extend the wire or move it to a midline stripe. In my interpretation, they would have to file for a city right of way permit to do that.
Correct. Um and and really it is because there's there's a variety of ways they could do it. If it's an overhead drop, we we just want the ability to understand what's being done to make sure that it is according to the dictates. Um so if it's an overhead and we review that application and see that there's very, you know, minimal concern. Then we address it appropriately, but if if uh for example, um it's a, it's gonna go down a hole. And and cut across an easement where utilities exist, we want the ability to locate and and ensure.
Oh yeah, I'm just like, this is, this is like we've been any other city that like we do work with. I don't have to pull over. So if I call Avista to get an overhead drop, I just scheduled with Avista. I don't know if they have an agreement, but I I've never had to get a right of way permit. And in my interpretation, this right of way permit, I would have to, like as an electrical contractor or as a vista. This would put a a a burden upon Avista. If they wanted to come and just do a a simple overhead service drop, do an entire permit application for every service drop. With which wouldn't necessarily impact a right of way because they're gonna come out with a bucket truck and. Pull the the fuse on a transformer and cut three wires and then they just drop it down because it's safe. And then they come back at the end of the day and they have to back up. So there's no changes made. There's no impact to the right of way. But the way that this is written, we would have to get one.
Are you talking about a um a temporary?
No, I I'm talking for a service change.
A service change.
So if I had to go and replace this, the meter in the panel, I have to call Avista to get a overhead service drop. They come and physically disconnect wires and make it safe. Um that's, that falls within this right of way permit.
Yeah, well, we can certainly look if if that um is beyond, I'll I'll take a a closer look at.
Yeah, I just think it's it's because it's, there's no delineation for like maintaining or service of existing infrastructure.
Yeah, that's kind of, I was looking at that, it looks like it's more of a maintenance issue than.
Right, but that's not, but that's not delineated in this language at all.
There's no exception.
Yeah, yeah, it just says installing or replacing cables, wires or conduit over. Any city-owned easement, which is in front of every piece of property.
Right, so that should say any new?
Um yeah, I mean, if you're getting a new service drop or something, you have to get a building permit. I would assume that it would be from the building permit process that you can, you can tack on the building permit process or right of way permit. Because then you're adding new services, say right of way. But say if 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 a a panel or um reimagine Medical Lake's building out here blows up. And I gotta call and get a service drop, I would have to get a right of way permit.
Oh, that's great input.
To do maintenance.
Yeah, that's great input. Um I've got some notes here. We'll make sure we uh come up with some uh more.
Oh, I have one thing to that. So I went to the Avista Academy and um there is, there is a reason though to have some control over what's happening on those poles. Because um Avista has a lot of, has secured their right of way. But all the other stuff hanging on there isn't necessarily secured their right of way. They've got permission from Avista, but Avista leaves it on those companies, telecommunications and fiber and broad, you know. Like whatever's happening, um a cable, you know, so um there's a lot of. Um services going across right of ways that have not been taken care of.
Oh yeah, like Davis and and Cox Communication and the cable TV stuff that goes everywhere.
Phone line, all of that stuff. Um and so as more and more come into the the industry, if you will. And and that i- industry expands, um then it's come, people are concerned. They have all this stuff hanging at those different levels and it's not being regulated. So this like, anything that's on the right of way needs to be looked at as we remove it, which is different than what you're talking.
Yeah, yeah, but I would also be more inclined. So like if you call Davis Communication to go get a new cable model. And they have to restrain the cable in the alley from my house, out to the house, it would fall within this. So I would be more interested in having standards and policies and procedures that are with those individual franchises. That just say, you know, if it's within compliance of these standards that we have, so that we can maintain all the control over what's going on.
Put this in the O two O, it talks about the franchise agreement. So anybody delivering services would, that would apply to them, but.
But don't they still have to get a permit within the franchise agreement?
It would, as it's written now.
Right. So I I think it would put a lot of burden on the individual contractors or service providers. As if they had to fill out a, i- if Dave, like Davis Communication to restrain COAX overhead. If if we already have an agreement that they say, you know, we're gonna put it here, this is what we, as accepting standards. You know, like Avista has a a blue book that's a hundred and something pages that has all of their policies and procedures. And they have those agreements with all the cities and the counties and everything. And they just say, this, this is what we do and this is how we do it. We're at this elevation underground, we're this far from the easements, we're this far from gas. So we're, so it's all pre-coordinated. And then, then they essentially just say, hey, we're doing this thing based off the book. And everybody says it. So that, and and it would relieve the burden a lot on. Uh our our city inspectors to have to come out and and close each one of these permits. That's the other thing that I look at is, as, yeah, as as we start restoring services to all the to houses that are gonna be built too. If they were existing services, the 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 power and the cable TV and the and all of that. I mean, we want to have those in place, those standard things in place. Um and in my opinion, when people just say, well, they're done to the stand, they're done to the codes, they're done to whatever. Then it's a lot easier for an inspector to go out and just do a drive-by and sign it off instead of.
That part of the um new construction permit, which would be different. That's a question I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh if 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 we're dictating that they have to get a right of way permit. I- i- if it's for new construction, I think also the window is very short. The ninety-day completion window is short. Um for new construction, that's uh like standard electrical permits and building permits from the county are at least a hundred and eighty days. I know we don't want to leave them out there, but um if somebody comes down, applies for a permit and then they're, then they're. Because we make them do that when they do building permit, then their house gets delayed. They have two thirty-day extent. They have a thirty-day period and then another thirty-day extension. Then that's it. If they haven't started work, then the permit's canceled. And then even if they do start work, they have ninety days and that can be extended once. Um that's, it's, it's just drastically shorter than I have any other standard building permit. So.
Don't we have an easy, an out though, uh with uh um under permit on page one? The city council reserves the right through franchise agreement to modify, waive or establish newer, different conditions related to construction work.
If that's the way we want to interpret it.
Franchise people, that I think there's a difference too between the ISPs, the people who own. Uh the services being delivered and the people who are installing. Um, you know, so the franchise agreement is gonna apply to the owner, you know. So, but you raised some really good questions.
Yeah, if they, if they sub it out to another contractor, an installation contractor, we just make them agree to just use right of their. And all this pertaining to all subcontractors. Not super.
Well, I'll verify to you with that, um because there are terms in franchise agreements that that are different. And they wouldn't pertain to this right of way work because they're specific, they're specific. If you do have to get a right of way permit for that franchise agreement, but the the maintenance and replacement and all those elements. Uh are spelled out in those franchise agreements. So potentially with Avista. Um it's covered under their franchise agreement. So this wouldn't pertain if they were doing any drop.
And I've never seen a franchise.
But I'll, I'll, I'll verify that. Yeah, these are great inputs, um and and definitely worthy to.
Yeah, and then even, you know, it it also comes into weird things too, like um. Yeah, so like, um if if I was an electrical contractor putting in a temporary service. Am I responsible or is Avista responsible? Because Avista's the one that they stretch the cable across. So um they're gonna hate it. Avista's gonna hate doing this. They might just help.
Well, and and again, that, yeah, it could be defined in their franchise.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll get to the bottom.
Right, and and if we're just willing to accept that their standard policies and procedures over our right of ways, there are the most conservative. Specs for for writing business.
I was thinking of the reference and then it's some standard.
Yep, very standard, blue book.
Just take the first code I've seen without exemption. Just to say, I feel like we reviewed quite a few codes and this is the first one.
And you raised a good point too. Any policy, any, any time that we update um an ordinance. We want to have an emergency exemption in case of a natural de- emergency declaration. These rules can maybe waived by, um you know, public work, you know, by the mayor. Once that's, you know, declared, then these rules can be spent in a way that determined by staff who, you know, are the ones doing the work with. What needs to happen now and what doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah, or we can just vote to have, you know, like a simple declaration that's just all building permits that are being done.
Well, if you put it in the law, the mayor, then the player is a natural disaster. And if it's in here, it says in case of a natural disaster, you can waive that. So going forward, keep in mind that we always, we want to build those in. Just to the little spot.
That might suggest that we can put that in the administrative element of the code in general.
That's a great idea.
Instead of having it for every title, we have it once to cover everything.
Yep, yeah.
But I'm just looking at that more of the service aspect, because that's like, that's what I'm used to.
Yeah.
Is when when somebody calls to have a tree blows down their overhead electrical line. There and there is an emergency, you know, um. It um provision in here for that, but one working day, is that what it was?
Uh five working days.
Oh, five working, oh, one day after it's, it's been closed. Yeah.
Yeah, in the case of emergency is under the zero two zero. Uh in case of emergency, private or public utility may commence work. Prior to obtaining a permit, provided the person responsible for the work contains a permit within five working days. Again, I mean, those are way more strict than other um cities, uh but we're, you know, small town, pretty simple. Call Scott.
Right, right, right. Still wanna have to have, still wanna have, um have to have another Scott just to drive around and look at daily permits.
Yeah, and that's great. I will, I will take a look at at how this bounces with our franchise agreements to ensure that. Yeah, because it's not our goal to um overburden the process. But what our, what our goal is ultimately is that for providers who want to come in and be in every inch of our right of way. We want to make sure that we have a chance to review. Chance to review.
A, a new fiber provider that's for profit, I mean, I mean, a utility district is entirely different.
Sorry about digging up streets and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
All of that that goes along with it, that to see attention of it, um, these big projects. Um, and so maybe that's just the distinction that needs to be made, routine maintenance is different than.
Well, and sometimes you can set a, a job cost, you know, e- even if, if, if the. If the, the impacted. If the total amount of the job is, say, less than ten thousand dollars, you, you know, or if it's. I don't know.
Some standard.
Right, right, yeah, I think, I think just having individual residents getting service. This would impact that a lot, so.
Maybe the distinction, you know.
Right, whether it's infrastructure.
Maintenance, you know, that seems like that'd be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, cause if we're worried about where, where it's going on the pole, it's gonna be the infrastructure.
Sure, sure.
So, and then we can just dictate what our standards are to whoever's coming into town, just be like, nope, this is the spot you got there, people like that.
Mr. Pritchard, I know you had a question that you.
I do, I was gonna say, guests are out there, they can always leave if they need to. The, sort of the elephant in the room is that we are in a wonderful place, not like personality and sort of, uh, and profession in its own way, our right of ways in Medical Lake are. Wide.
Yes.
So this is actually pretty important for everybody, and I think that you brought back to our, our vacating, where half the garage was on.
Right.
City property, and I know for a fact, I have a raised bed where I like to grow weeds, I try to grow blueberries. That's all on city property, so I mean, this is gonna have a wider impact as well, though. To them, for residents that wanna just build something, or should they be able to build things, cause it's white.
Well, it will only become a problem when somebody gets a permit and wants to. Plow through your blueberries and they're like, well, this isn't the city right of way and we're laying a hide here.
That's a reading.
So like, over city blueberries anyway.
We don't share.
But, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, cause it, cause it says any other development activity in the right of way. So that could be your raised bed, I mean, I know, cause we were looking at the fencing and stuff like that for, for fence permits.
I think I have a tree in there, it's, but I think we're talking about new.
Well, cause I. Cause of my house, it's, it's sixty feet, so like the front of my house that has. Thirty-five or forty feet of yard in front of it, the front of my house is the end of their end, is the end of the easement.
Yeah.
So like if I put, um, if I put a new walkway in. With crushed rock, do I need to get a right of way permit?
Good question.
So, um, I, I know it's for utilities and stuff, um, but this just any other development activity in the right of way. That's everybody's front yard.
Well, I, and I would say that if, uh, if you do what you wanna do and then later find out. That they're gonna come through and dig a utility and undo all that development activity that you did not check with and didn't know.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
So the education piece is really important as well, and especially in right of ways that don't belong. Um, to homeowners and they can be very surprised, Parker was a case in point as well. When we went through and they said, no, that's my sprinkler system and that grass, that's my yard, and it's like, well. Surprised it's not, it's a, it's right away. And so, yeah, we should, yeah, so they'll try and to limit those surprises, but a- again, we can, we can take a look to ensure that. Um, yeah, we find the right balance point.
Yeah, I just don't want a bunch of citizens not to know that they have to pull a permit. To like augment their yard.
Yeah, and, and this is, yeah, what, what we, like, and another, just another case in point is fences. And we don't require a fence permit, but everywhere else does, because you can dig a hole somewhere. That something is that you didn't expect, and so they require that, you know, so. Even something as simple as, uh, putting a fence in your yard.
Yeah.
Um, in other places, pretty commonplace to see that happen.
Yeah, and I understand the importance of it, cause like, I was scraping grass for a, a walkway to put a new, new walkway, I had the. Wire that went from my water meter up to the, to the radio. Because they, whoever put it in buried it this far down on the grass, so yeah, we need to have standards, we need to see how that's going.
We've, we've been a little lax with ATO, we're just trying to shore things up, get and make some rules and. Yeah, some business, big business, we got millions of dollars worth of work beginning. And we're gonna have to start thinking about these right of ways in a very real, uh, and concrete terms.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm making light of the blueberry, I'm talking about. Yeah, that's an issue.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and which we wanna eliminate from being developed in the right of way, because they don't belong there.
So then, what, can I just ask the city council member or whatever, it's a personal city council member, is there like a fourteen years or whatever, if somebody has. Their house was on city property for X number of years?
Oh, like a, like a, like a.
It would have to be addressed on a case by case basis, that's exactly how it would happen, and you'd have to ask for an exception and, yeah. There's a process, there's a due process for that, I don't know what the answer would be.
Well, and, and, yeah, the, the broader scope of Title eleven and the rewrite that we're doing as well, which started with that street vacation policy. Because streets were vacated in the past with easements and important, um, access requirements that we no longer have to critical city infrastructure. So we want to ensure that we don't make decisions like that moving forward to eliminate those concerns from needing to be. Um, discussed and addressed, and so, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a more comprehensive approach, it's a very different look. Um, but again, these are, these are great inputs, um, we're gonna take, we'll take these inputs and, and address them and. And bring forward the, the desire, uh, the hope. Um, would be to do that, address these inputs, seek legal review and bring forward an ordinance for a first read. Um, at our next meeting, uh, and your consideration, which, um, is important, cause you will, uh, get plenty of. Opportunity in the near future to discuss those franchise agreements we were just talking about as well. Cause there's a couple in wrapped.
And to that point, that's what we must have this in place first. Um, so I, I look forward to having that, and this establishes. You know, what's it gonna look like twenty, thirty, forty years from now, just like what we've allowed to go into the ground and over and under. Up until now, it's caused, now we have the blueberry issue, so. Council, um, it's, uh, if the consensus of council did go away, we'll bring that back and. Review language for next, okay.
And happy to take any other inputs to, if your gears grind like mine and, uh, all the great ideas, um, come to you once we adjourn. Um, my email's still accessible, my phone number, uh, I'll answer it, so, uh, happy to receive those inputs. Cause ultimately, you know, we're not trying to rush anything, we just, we want it to be right, uh, so these are the perfect discussions to help us get it.
Which is why they're there. So with that, then I guess we'll move on to six B, uh, the climate, uh, planning grant from the Department of Commerce, Mr. Weathers.
Um, right, uh, so. What, um, this workshop is that we added, appreciate your flexibility and, and having us added to you is, um, we have. Uh, with the city planner, Lisa Rodriguez, we submitted for a grant from the Department of Commerce. Um, in relation to the legislation that was passed and signed into law known as, um, House Bill eleven eighty-one. Um, this adds climate goal, the Growth Management Act, and it requires local comprehensive plans to have a climate element. With resilience and greenhouse gas emissions mitigation subsegments to the comp plan. Uh, the resilience sub-element must include goals and policies to improve climate preparedness, response and recovery efforts, key words. Um, and it's mandatory for all counties and cities fully planning under the Growth Management Act, and it's encouraged for everyone, so. Uh, we are a fully planning city under the Growth Management Act, and we have a robust plan to educate, um. The comp plan update, we're due in June of twenty twenty-six. Um, so our comprehensive plan has many required elements. Um, due to House Bill eleven eighty-one, it has an added requirement of this climate, um. What is it called again, the climate planning, uh, element, and so. Here, uh, I, what I wanted to do tonight was to introduce you to how we applied for this grant, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. From the Department of Commerce to help us prepare and do the work to implement these. Uh, requirements into our comp plan update as we do our comp plan update process. Um, and so the way that we looked at it, having just faced a, um, disaster that can be related to climate. Resiliency, and so, uh, looking at the disaster that we faced, um, there's a couple ways, right? Traditionally, what can happen in a small city is we say, oh, great, the government's gonna give us a hundred thousand dollar grant. Let's hire a consultant to do all the work for us and we'll rubber stamp it and call it good enough, because we really don't know what's going on, and they'll tell us. Um, we know a lot more about what this is, uh, what this is now, and as a result of that. Our plan is to have a, um, a, a, a takeaway. Of a very direct and clear hazard mitigation plan for the real risk that Medical Lake faces. In a host of, of concerns, not just wildfires, but every possible hazard that we face here locally. What could face that brings risk to us, along with our partners at DSHS, along with our partners at Medical Lake School District. And the Silver Lake Bible Camp, and, um, Spokane County Sheriff's and the Fire District. Fairchild Air Force Base, along with our partners, all those potential risks that we face. For where we are and, and who we are, um, our goal is to walk away with a very specific hazard mitigation plan. Which the county, um, we're annexed into the county's plan, and then, and we have identified those risks and done. Minimal about them, because we thought, you know, it's not, that it's not important, but we just didn't, but the resources were. Um, we didn't think it was that important, and so now we know, and we wanna do better, so, uh, the goal in this was to say, well. We'd like to have a takeaway of a hazard mitigation plan, so we put that into the plan. The other thing was, in the midst of this chaos, um. We did what we thought was prudent and necessary, um, and asked for forgiveness later, because. Communication is a challenge in the midst of crisis, when you have a lot of small agencies, um, that are working together. And everyone is trying to do what's best, but communicating is very difficult. So the other piece of the puzzle that I thought was really important was for us to have a takeaway of a communications plan for the city. And so, uh, the way that we proposed, the way that we, um, applied for this grant was to essentially say. We want to do the work and the homework, but we wanna hire consultants to help us. Give us a takeaway of a hazard mitigation plan and a communications plan, and from those two plans, we'll be able to take that information and integrate it into. Our comp plan update, so that, um, we meet the requirements of House Bill eleven eighty-one. Um, we, uh, we don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, um, but. That was the commitment that we had on the front end, and I just thought it was gonna be a far better value for the city. Um, and discussing with the mayor as well, we thought it would be a far better value for the city to get those takeaways. Instead of just hiring a consultant to come in and tell us how to check all the boxes and put the right language in there, so that we're satisfied. Uh, so that is what we did, um. We'll talk about, uh, and there's a plan here that's included with that grant that in, um. Talks about initializing our resiliency project, uh, putting, uh, through a planning commission workshop and. And forming a policy advisory team with all those partners that I mentioned. Establishing an engagement strategy, talking about the exposure that we have, where our risks are, identifying those, understanding our vulnerabilities. Um, looking through our existing plans and policies and, and auditing them and finding out where we can. Um, do better and, and shore those things up, um, exploring solutions. Uh, evaluating those solutions and getting public comment as well, prioritizing them and, and reporting that back. And then defining some mitigation strategies, developing those goals and policies and a hazard mitigation plan. Um, and education communication plan and, um, and then incorporating that, so. That's, uh, essentially what it looks like, there's a cost breakdown of where we think those dollars are gonna go to, to help us get to that end. But I wanted to be able to provide to you the context of that application, uh, because. Um, the grant agreement came in and they're gonna award us the hundred thousand dollars to do that. Uh, because we competed well, uh, it's a guaranteed outcome, but nonetheless, uh, we asked for that funds to do this. Uh, to do this work, and I'm gonna make sure you understood the context before I. Drop a grant agreement, uh, on the agenda and you wonder where all this comes from, so, uh, happy to address any questions or, or concerns you may have.
I'm saying, thank you. Yeah.
It's great.
I think too, out of this work, we can also blame some of those things, uh, working on our playbook.
Yes.
Uh, and so we'll have someone who can have the hours. And, you know, put the hours, need attention to some of those details and, and, uh, when are those out for us along the way too, so we. Maybe we'll get a third, um, you know, benefit, you know, from these monies, I'm really looking forward to it, it's gonna be great. To take a deep dive, um, and to be better prepared, so, um, appreciate you asking. We have to know and to keep our, we'll be aware of what's coming and know when to ask, and, so, thanks for, for doing that, I appreciate it.
Um, additionally, there, so, um, with just the comp plan update in twenty twenty-six, um, commerce also provides grants. To communities to help with the funding that, and so, um, we, I think that opens up in June, uh, is what I hear. So we'll be applying for a hundred and twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars for that process as well, so there will be money to help us. With outreach and, and the resources for the comp plan update as well, so this was just. What can we do with this hundred thousand dollars, this is what we put together, um, and we're excited to, to bring it to. To the city as well.
I'm really excited to do some real thorough work and even with the other, um, the growth management, the hundred twenty-five thousand. And not just doing a cut and paste, uh, from around the county, you know, which is sort of how a lot of the work, not, not in Medical Lake, but others. Have just kind of done that, and, and we ended up with bad information, you know, and, and our comp plan is not even accurate. And so I'm really looking forward to, um, making that a good document, an accurate document, and, and one that we can really. Use to the plan, um, which we, that we have, so, um, it's, it's gonna be money well spent, I'm looking forward to that, so, thank you. We'll look forward to seeing that on an agenda soon. So we'll move on into action items, um, the consent agenda, the approval of the February twenty, twenty twenty-four minutes. Uh, thank you for coming tonight. The February twenty, twenty twenty-four minutes, any additions or changes to those minutes?
I move to accept the minutes, second.
One favor. Any approved, any opposed? Minutes approved, uh, and then we're gonna approve that, um, March fifth, my twenty-fourth, the warrants numbered five one zero five four through five one one zero four. Any amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, thirty-seven cents. Move to a three?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are paid unanimously, uh, resolution twenty-four six six one, Bartek, bio-solvent agreement extension. In that page thirty-eight.
Yes, so in page thirty-eight of your packets, um, you'll see that, um, the agreement, which, again, we worked shop at the previous meeting. So, um, it's just back for you now, um, it has been signed from our partners at Bartek, and so upon your. Uh, approval, if that's the desire of council, it would be an executable contract that puts us, um, back on track with our bio-solvent agreement.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're not passed, so much, uh, resolution twenty-four six six one, that's unanimously. Resolution twenty-four six six four, Avista net metering agreement, uh, at page forty.
Right, so, uh, yeah, on page forty, you're probably finding Avista net metering agreement context. Uh, for this agreement is, um, it's directly related to our solar array project, that the wastewater treatment plant. Um, which we have talked about a, a lot, and, uh, we have seen that, um, kind of deadline move on us a few times. But, um, we're very excited, the work, there, there's gearing up to do the work starting in April, which would be wonderful. Now, but this net metering agreement is a critical piece of that puzzle, so for the contractor to be able to install the meters. So that our solar panels can get credit for the power that goes into the system, and we can reduce our costs. Um, this, this net metering agreement is required, and so, um, you'll see, it's, has. It's has a an attachment as well in the back, which is the application uh to a Vista, uh, to do this process. And so. At any rate, these two um are for you for approval tonight so that we can move forward with that solar array project and the efficiencies that will come. Um, from that. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
On page forty-two, two point six, it says on March thirty-first of each calendar year. Any remaining unused kilowatt out credit will, by the customer, goes back to a Vista without any compensation to the customer. That's standard.
Yes.
Okay. Just kind of funny, it looks like we don't pay attention, they're gonna grab it back.
No, well, they, so we don't ever get the money back. They just put a credit on your bill, but actually, that's the best time to do it because we're gonna have almost no generation over January, February, so you use up all that credit.
Okay.
And then. March thirty-first is where the days start getting longer, so you start accumulating more. So they used to do it like in the anniversary of your enrollment date. People lost their mind over it cuz you'd you'd lose all your credits like in.
January.
Are like April or May or like July, and and that's where you're like, you're building, it's a bank and they just subtract from it, and you use more than the bank. So that's standard, e- even in California, Arizona, that's all they, that's what they do.
Okay.
And um. I, well, I, well, I'm just saying, all across the the high producing parts of aviation, this is standard.
In the.
You don't know until you ask, that's why.
Yes, yeah.
Sure, and I I can assure you, too, that the demands that, um, Steve's plant, uh, puts on the a Vista.
Well, that.
We will never be banking.
All right, good.
Always be realizing the status.
Say, they limit the amount.
Make sure you use your credits.
So that we don't become a power plant, right? So. Oh, that's. Any other discussion or questions about that?
I'll move to prove this one, too. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four six six four passes. Thank you. Um, public hearing, non-scheduled. And ordinance is non-scheduled, the one executive session is scheduled, we have one. Um, upcoming agenda items, uh, council, if you have anything particular that you'd like to add now, otherwise, uh, look out to Mr. Weathers and, um, let me know what's on your mind. Opportunity in for interested citizen comment. Um, this is all okay for anyone online or in the room. I don't know, Mr. uh, Passanetti, did you wanna finish? Uh, feel free.
Just. In one minute.
Come on up. Thank you for being so accommodating, sucking through the hard chair on the front row.
And again, my name is Leo Passanetti, and I reside at fifty-eight fourteen West John Gate Drive. To continue the discussion, uh, Spokane region long-term recovery group. Uh, we're gonna be helping out with Medical Lake and ALR. But moving forward, cuz it's not a matter of if we have a disaster, it's when we have a disaster, and it's also encompassing Spokane region. So, but the two other roles are, or I have actually four of the roles that the group. Uh, pertains to is casework and assessment for identifying family needs. And facilitating the proper prevent uh provisions or resources to those needs. But also provide the volunteer ordination, the Red Cross. The Salvation Army, the SBA, all that will be in uh entered into the recovery group. We also advocate on behalf of the disaster survivors who are not receiving adequate uh assistance because. They're either being ignored. Or, uh, they fall through the crack of the caregiving organizations. And. A long-term goal for this group is just not just to have Spokane region. But to be a sort of a. Um. Boilerplate for the different other communities that lack, I mean. I was doing a research on recovery groups, and it's a, it's a fairly new uh niche of for the disaster preparedness. Uh, FEMA relies heavily on uh these region, these recovery regions. And a lot of them are in hibernation because they're not in a disaster, but the minute the disaster comes. They activate just like certs, just like any of the other disaster responders. They are ready to to develop things, and that is what my goal is to, for the entire state of Washington, is to be a. Plan for that to move on further, and I really appreciate having the opportunity to. Let you know of my dreams and my goals for the Spokane region. And have any questions?
Thank you for your work and your service. We appreciate you.
Appreciate your work.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and that. Uh. Okay, uh, any other citizen comment? Three times.
I'll move.
Second. Only.
Aye.
Any opposed? I never has anyone. There's never anyone opposed.